How are you?
I'm doing well. Nice socks, I like those.
Good, how are you?
I got a blue one today. I did my, uh, we could have broke out my Christmas list this week for today.
It's gonna be a shock.
Oh, I gotta get them off, that's right, it's December 1st. I gotta get my Christmas list next week.
All right.
Good.
I only have four of them. So I'm gonna do three more. Yeah. Hey Matt.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you, and yourself? Talk to your dad. He's pretty funny.
Thank you.
Yep, watch that. Somebody put the laptop away with it. Uh, but it still turned on.
He said no.
We are live, John.
No.
No, because there's a bunch of other stuff in there.
Wow.
Hello there, how are you?
I'm doing well. This is the first we've seen each other today.
Today.
Usually it's the first we see each other for the week. I'm just impressed that you trust me that much that you'll leave me alone.
I know, I just be working. For sure.
Always.
Always. We never seen the laughing back. Oh, I can see you these days.
You're trying to yell at me back?
Matt.
It's hard to work.
You don't want to sit right here?
I'm surprised you're in eyes.
Where is your name?
He was almost on retirement.
It was a trial run.
Well, I wonder if you have one in there?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you can, you don't have to, if you want to. It's where all the cool kids sit.
I'm wrapping that. You're here tomorrow.
I'm here telling the energy.
Don't trip. Do you have your little names?
I know, that's what I just said, I don't know if we have one, but if we don't, yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
It's 5:30, this is the Hiawatha City Council meeting for December 2021. So I'll call the meeting to order and we will stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ready?
Amen.
And we have a roll call.
Jerry Moinkle.
Here.
Amy Wickendall.
Here.
Rob Archibald.
Here.
Dick Olson.
Here.
Steve Dodson.
Here.
Uh, approval of the consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve? First and the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Uh, I mean, capital test. Uh, I'm sorry, that was approval of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Hello? Yes.
First and the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on, item six, citizens' input. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about something not on the agenda? If we're good there, we'll move on. Item seven, uh, reports from, uh, council, mayor, city manager, council members, anything? I have nothing. Um, although the Billups Center looks really nice, it's near incompletion, so that's, that is very good, and then it's good to see all the construction happening up on the north end of town with the on-ramp, and then the, the housing developments, I don't know if we've ever had that many, uh, earth-moving pieces of equipment in town at one time, so that's cool to see that when you drive in that direction.
That's what's important to me, so. Yeah, my wife and I took a drive out this afternoon, looking, I was showing her, she was quite impressed, and then also looked like they got the playground equipment finished.
Uh, it, doesn't that look awesome? Uh, it really, the trail.
The trail looks great.
It is, yes, it is, it is impressive.
City manager, do you have anything?
Um, just a, just a couple things I just provided you with an update for our Hiawatha Summit. You'll notice that the venue has changed, we were initially at, um, sorry, I want to make sure you can hear me. Uh, we were initially going to, um, hometown style, and but because we are expecting 50 to 60 people for this event, that it, their areas are just too small to have that many people, so they are going to co-host at Stillwater Coffee. So we are gonna go there and, uh, they will, they will host, they will host the evening there, and I think they're gonna set up a booth or, or something just to kind of, you know, let people know who they are and what they do. And we're very thankful that Stillwater Coffee is willing to, to share in, share in that event and, and provide the space. And then secondly, we, Mayor Bennett and I participated in a youth, uh, five-season leadership program this morning, and talking about city government, they, we had, I would say there's kind of about 50 students, um, from the area, and they had excellent questions about what do we see, you know, as they graduate from high school and go out into the workforce, what do we see their challenges being in the job market? And not only in the job market, when you're looking at the type, the type, uh, how do I want to describe that? The settings, you know, versus being in the office all the time or working remotely 100% working for a company that may be in New York, or you're working for, or you move and you're working for a different company. So just talking about one, talking about those types of things, and why Iowa, why stay in Iowa? And I thought, our conversations were very interesting, uh, we probably visited and answered questions for about an hour and a half. And I think some of the unique situations that our children are going to have, the younger group of people that are gonna have, and I'm already hearing that now, and that is when they're working from home and not going into the office, when they're looking at wanting a promotion or talking to someone about a promotion, and the value of networking, and when you're doing everything through Zoom, you really don't get to have that conversation at the water fountain, or, you know, those different opportunities that you might have or being, or your name being recognized. I'm already starting to hear that now, and the value and importance of, of certainly the hybrid opportunity. It, and, you know, you look at that as a challenge, but I also said, you know, this really can be what, this is really an opportunity for them because they will have the opportunity to have the flexibility that my generation really didn't get to see that. I think some of us can, can talk about, can talk about that, as we didn't, we don't have that flexibility or didn't have that flexibility. So, I don't know, they might end up with the best of both worlds. But it was an awesome conversation, I love participating in that, along with the other, with Marion and Cedar Rapids as well.
All right, thank you, Kim. Uh, moving on, item number eight, getting the business public hearing to consider approval of the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2022 through 2026. We'll open the public hearing at 5:36. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item? All right, anyone like to speak in opposition of this item? Um, did we receive anything in the office?
No, I did not.
So with that, I will close the public hearing at 5:37. And, uh, consider resolution approving the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2022 to 2026. Do I have a motion to approve?
Uh-huh.
Second.
First and the second, uh, any discussion on the CIP?
Well, good work again, guys, um, it's very clean, very succinct, and good roadmap for the future.
Thank you.
Great work, everybody. Can we have a roll call, please?
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item nine, public hearing to consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance's Chapter 3 Boundaries 3.02, voting precincts to rearrange districts or re-presenting. We'll open the public hearing at 5:38. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Um, have we received anything in the quicks office?
No.
If not, we'll close that public hearing at 5:39. And consider a first reading, a motion approving, uh, first reading.
Second.
First and the second, uh, roll call, please.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Uh, consider waiving second and third readings.
Oh, no.
First and the second.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You oppose, same sign. All right, consider adoption, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
First and the second, roll call, please.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Moving on, item 10, consider resolution approving amendment authorizing a 28E agreement between the City of Cedar Rapids, City of Hiawatha, Lynn County, City of Marion, City of Robin for phases 1, 2, and 3, including segments A through G of the Tower Terrace Road Transportation Corridor improvements in which professional service, services for an NEPA study and project design report is to be provided. Do I have a motion approving?
Send us.
All right, first and the second, any discussion on this? Yes. Kim or John, anything to add in?
Not a whole lot to add, other than, you know, uh, we've started the NEPA study, and then of course, I tried to put in a memo that once you go through the initial review, and they, if they start to find anything that they think could be archaeological or need more in-depth, especially in those low-lying areas, that is where they have to, uh, start their more investigation. So that's where this additional cost come from, and again, it's a shared cost, um, so it goes with the original agreement between Marion and Cedar Rapids, Hiawatha, and Lynn County.
And how long is this study due for?
NEPA study, I believe, is five-year, or three-year. So, uh, doesn't sound like we got the, the money correct, or is that official yet?
It's not official yet.
Not official yet, but if we don't get it this year, then we're gonna reapply next year. And again, it's, that's all the more reason to get the NEPA study completed, that if we don't get it this year, that next year we can still apply, and the NEPA study is complete in its entirety.
And it, and it is important for us to show that we are working, that we're moving forward. So if we're not engaged, and at the federal level with the, the dollars that they have for transportation, if, if we're just sitting back waiting for that handout, they're, they're not going, they're not going to look at us. So the NEPA study that's so very, very important also, also will give us that opportunity to know, do we have some archaeological issues that we would need to confront? Because that will take time to work through that, that isn't something that you, that you, uh, mediate within a 30-day period. That takes every deal of time, so that will give us, that'll give us that time if we need it to get that done. And then we also, acquisitions, that is the other big piece to this whole puzzle, and every community needs to continue to be moving forward with the acquisitions for the right way. So this is just keeping us moving forward in all of our communities, and the meeting that we had, uh, I think it was last week before, um, everybody was in agreement, we needed to continue to move forward.
Right. Good. Can we have a roll call for item 10, please?
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Moving on, item 11, consider resolution amending final plan and development agreement for undersized lots at rolling Prairie Fifth Condition. Do I have a motion to process this resolution? Second. First and the second, any discussion on this?
Can, John, can I have you just sort of have one of the two of you just review a little bit? I want to make sure we're very clear on why we're making this recommendation, and the other part of that is that we are not setting a precedent.
Yeah, if you, uh, look at the final plan and the development agreement, it makes no mention of the fact that some of the lots are too small, that we did not recognize the issue until we were doing the final approvals for the plan of improvements. Uh, when we discovered that some of the lots are under a 10,000 square foot measurement, which is a minimum allowance in our zoning code, we decided that we want to be transparent in the, um, acceptance of this development, just like any other. We have good reason not to change these lot sizes, and we, uh, express that in our memo and also in the request from the developer, in terms of the layout for a grid system, uh, utility management, and in terms of the extra burden that we place on this developer for the lots next to the county developments. Uh, they did lose a considerable amount of space going from a, uh, .23 acre requirement to .33 acre requirement, which is another 40,000, 4,000, 40,000 square feet? 4,000, another 4,000 square feet per lot. Uh, given those exceptions and the layout that they've come up with, uh, we think that that is, this is the best option. They can actually, uh, make the lot sizes work technically for the 10,000 square feet, however, it is not in the best interest for the development or for us in maintaining utilities for the lot lines. So that's why we're recommending that we continue and change, or at least recognize that these lots are smaller. Uh, in our research, we discovered that, uh, this actually is part of the process for acceptance of, uh, developments. It doesn't go through a variance process like other variances go to the Board of Adjustment. This is your call and yours alone as part of accepting plots. So it's a very normal process.
Thank you, Pat. Oh, yeah, and when you look at the overall plot, it doesn't, it doesn't look like it's out of the ordinary, I mean, it all flows really well, so.
Exactly.
All right, can we have a roll call for item number 11, please?
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
All right, moving on, item number 12, fiscal year 21 strategic plan and goal setting. Consider resolution acknowledging, adopting, and placing on file fiscal year 21 strategic plan, goal setting initiative. So, all right, first and the second, any discussion? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
All right, item B, consider resolution updating our mission and value statement. Do I have a motion?
Oh, no.
I have first and a second.
One of us had it, I think.
Who, second?
I think Steve was the first and Amy was the second.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Good work, man.
Well, Kim gets half the credit, we sat down and knocked that out, uh, pretty quickly, and I'm, I'm proud that it's a little bit more clear and concise, and I think it does, uh, speak to the values that we strike out both here in the city.
Yeah, Amy, would you mind reading?
Uh.
Did you be, have the honors to read what the?
Here you go, yeah, if you, someone who's more of a copy.
Oh, okay.
Okay, is this one on?
I don't know much of this, yeah, babe.
Yep.
So, uh, City of Hiawatha mission statement, the City of Hiawatha is a community of family neighborhoods and businesses that is responsibly governed to promote growth and provide effective services for all people. And the City of Hiawatha value statement, the City of Hiawatha is metro, the metro area's most welcoming community to live, work, and play. Our village is making a path for creativity, diversity, and opportunity for all. Anything else?
Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
All right, moving on, item 13, consider resolution authorizing staff to proceed with a Hiawatha Fire Department fifth full-time fire medic position due to the demand and growth of the community and the Mercy Care Emergency Calls. Moving. So, first, second, and the second. Uh, any discussion?
Much, much needed, and, uh, I think, uh, Matt has an excellent personal point. He's developed, and he'll be looking at it over the next seven months.
All right, roll call, please.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
All right, moving on, item 14, discussion for, and for possible action on the City of Hiawatha mask policy. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I can start the discussion, I just want to make sure, starting the train, hopefully you can hear.
I wish we had a quiet zone.
Hopefully next year, right, time it will, we'll have that quiet zone. Oh, it lasts a few seconds, right? So I wanted just to take a little bit of time, uh, i- if you recall, you know, we certainly, with our mask policy and, and more specifically to citizens and vendors coming in to City Hall, we have, we've gone back and forth to requiring masks, not requiring masks, and then, um, back in August, requiring masks again because of the increase of, of, um, of COVID or Delta, I guess, the, the Delta variant coming through. What we are seeing happen, uh, when we have individuals come in, typically a high percentage of those individuals coming in to City Hall are by appointment. Many, uh, very few come in to pay their water bill anymore, they're, now everyone's used to just dropping off in the box out front and those types of things, so lots of times people that are coming in are coming in here by appointment. Um, the very first question, we do have the, the mask sign, um, on our doors, and they're, they come in with the mask, most of the time they come in with a mask, some people choose not to, but most time they come in. But the very first question that they say as they, as they greet us is, I'm vaccinated, not question, they make a statement and then they ask the question, I'm vaccinated, do we have to wear the mask? Um, all of us, when we're meeting, are vaccinated as well, and so we're not, when we sit down, we're not, we're not all wearing our masks. So I think, I, I think we need some clear direction, what you're comf, what you're comfortable with, because what we've been doing is just meeting people where they're at. So for example, someone who does come in with a mask and, and continues to wear the mask, we continue to wear our mask. So basically what we're doing at staff level is we're meeting people where they're at. Um, that, so I guess I kind of want to know what your thoughts are, some of what I've been seeing as I'm, as I'm traveling is that they're putting signs on the door that basically just says not vaccinated, and then have, and then half the picture of the mask. Um, I don't know if you want to, if you want to go to that point, or whether you want to continue to require the mask and meet people at where they're at, or whether you want us to just continue every month, wear a mask, vaccinated, not vaccinated. So I really need some input on that, because honestly, that is the question that we, we get every time.
Aye. Should we not discuss this until next month, the month after, with what's coming? I mean, I, I've heard that, uh, you have a vaccine and booster is good, but you still can get sick.
Yes, you still can.
It seems to me the jury is out, and I'm, I'm just maybe being the devil's advocate here, but it just, we, we got some new things on the horizon that, uh, we don't have confident, you know, information on.
Uh, I, there is, I mean, if it wasn't for the Omicron variant that's been in the news with the last couple of days, I would almost say that it might make sense to readjust, but I think we do need to see which direction this variant shows, because it is certainly possible, and even today, the first case of it was discovered out in California. You know, history knows how fast these things can move, by the time we meet again in two weeks, you may have cases in Iowa, and we don't necessarily know how that reacts to the vaccine at this time. So I would almost say, let's put a pause on it, so we get more of that information from the top level and just continue to use the mask, maybe bring it back in January, and make a decision once we have better information.
I agree with that, Amy, I've been following the Omicron too, and I don't think it would make a whole lot of sense for us to change the policy now, no mask, or whatever you want to do, and then this thing explodes, and then we have to change it back. I think we should just stay the course for the very reasons that Julie and, you know, Andy indicated, and let's review it once we really know where this Omicron thing is going. Is it, is likely to be wrong?
I mean, there's, there's that very real possibility, I mean, like I said, we just don't have the data yet, and it seems to be more transmissible, it seems to, at least personally, think people have some doubts what is, uh, what the effect, efficacy of the vaccines against it are. But there's also a counterveiling point that it may not be as lethal and symptomatic as the other ones, so we don't know.
Of course.
Yeah, you know, vaccines or viruses evolve all the time, so, yeah, I would say give us months and, uh, we'll have another, you know, take another review of it.
And I, I'd like to say I'm not necessarily for masks, I think I'm tired of it, like everybody else.
Yes.
But I, I just want to be prudent, you know, and, and suppose, uh, being, uh, members of the City Council and, uh, of the, uh, city, it just, we've got to leave. And if we don't, you know, choose to wear a mask, uh, through the next month or two, I, I just think that's maybe a bad example.
Now, I've been around a lot of different businesses, not in our area, but outside the county as well, and like you have noticed, you know, signs on the door that says, if you're not fully vaccinated, we recommend masking up.
Yep.
And had it not been for the Omicron variant popping up, I would have recommended that for us. But I have to agree with everybody else here so far, uh, that has spoken that, uh, we need to wait until January, I think, until we can reevaluate what this variant's doing. And I, I noticed that, uh, almost 80% of the people that are getting COVID now are then vaccinated. So, and I had a daughter that had COVID, she had, she was fully vaccinated, she got the one, eight of her children in her school class had COVID, and, uh, she ended up getting it, you know, she was fully vaccinated, had mild symptoms, but it got over very quickly, but, you know, you never know.
So, my take is that I think we should follow the CDC recommendations, which is, as long as we remain in an area of substantial or high transmission in Lynn County, according to CDC dot gov, their tracker, we should keep masks in place. And I think that we should make sure that signage is consistent across all ci, city buildings, and make sure that we're following through with that, especially while we remain in the area of substantial or high transmission.
What is the, I'm just curious, what's defined as high transmission? Because I know the rates were up over 10% last time I checked, what do we, what's the mean of higher than that?
Yeah, seven days versus the 14-day, I think it was 9.6 and then 16, something yesterday for the 14-day.
Do we know what the percent of infected people in Lynn County is now?
I think we're at 62%, is that right, Marlon?
That's pretty close, yeah.
So 10% higher than where we were six months ago.
I thought I had it in front of me, Amy, but I believe it's, it's on the CDC website.
That's okay, I mean, we can put in that, I think, I mean.
That just gives us some criteria as like, hey, we're not just going to arbitrarily make this decision.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can agree with that too, I think, uh, if we have, if we have something in policy where we can say, well, it's getting to this point, we can need to keep it up, or if it gets, the, the rates go down to a certain point, we can say we can start relaxing. It probably will have been flow. can start relaxing. It probably will have been slow.
It will, yes.
And so, hopefully there's an end point.
I'm joking, that's great.
Yeah.
So HI is defined as greater than a hundred cases per hundred thousand in the last seven days, with a positive, uh, test percentage of greater than ten percent. Substantial's fifty to ninety-nine, with a test rate of eight to ninety, nine point nine-nine, the moderate's ten to forty-nine, and five to seven point nine-nine percent. So, we good on that?
I think so, yes.
And current fully vaccinated percentage in Lynn County, according to CDC, I've got a sixty-one point two percent.
There you go.
All right, thank you for that discussion. Um, and then item fifteen, anything for the placement on the next agenda for council meeting or work sessions?
That comes to mind, so, uh, I can adjourn it, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Moving on to item sixteen, adjournment. We have a first, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at five fifty-nine.
Thank you, Arlen.